We'll switch around. We'll do public comment first.
A day is going to be the same thing when we talk.
Very good. Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting for October 30th, 2018. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible but liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. We've got a good council meeting, or a budget session and study session planned for this evening. But I do think it's important, there are a few things I've heard from a few folks that were already here, and also from our judge who would like to address the council regarding our budget. So what I'd like to do is switch citizen comment and council discussion deliberation. That way we hear from the folks first before we get too far down the road. With that, actually, I spoke previously with Judge Larson, and I believe Judge Larson has a few comments. And because he represents the entire court, can we give him five minutes? All right, Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Your Honor, and Deputy Mayor Honda and the rest of the council. I'm sorry for my dress, but after this, thanks to John Hutton and the Parks Department and the Inclusion Program, I'm going to the Action Club. It's through Kiwanis and the Inclusion Program, it's a service club for people with developmental disabilities. One of the best things I do every month. It's my favorite time.
Thank you.
So I have some written comments. I'm going to try to keep it real short. I'll skip over some of it. I'll give it to you after I'm done with it. But I'll just start. I'm restricted on what I can say due to ethical constraints. My comments are focused on impacts to court personnel. However, I cannot avoid the fact that many of the principles I refer to bleed over into other city departments. I come here tonight in support of your efforts to address salary equity in our city as compared to neighboring cities and to address our other small budget requests. None of you created the compensation problems we face, but I'm grateful that you're taking steps to fix it. I do not envy your role in formulating a budget and a statewide tax structure that impairs Federal Way's ability to collect revenue from taxes as compared to the ability of surrounding cities. You are already well aware of how the problem is compounded when other cities are willing and able to compensate employees at higher rates of pay in large part due to this inequity. I know firsthand from how the tax structure in Federal Way works. When I was on the school board, the first night I was on the school board, I had to cut 26 librarians. I had to vote to cut 26 librarians. And eight years ago last month, or 10 years ago last month, actually 12 years ago last month, my op-ed in the Seattle Times appeared that the only solution for that is litigation with the state for the equitable funding problems with schools. In early 2010, our pay system set the existing pay scale for our court administrator lower than it was to attract qualified candidates. As a result, we had to increase that pay scale to get our current court administrator to leave Seattle to come here. She still swallowed the approximate $20,000 pay cut only because this position got her closer to her home in Olympia. We also had to pay her at the top pace grade, which gave her little room for pay increases. Other cities with smaller courts increased pay for court administrators in interim, leaving her well below the standard pay today. In addition, she is currently paid just under 30% less than the average director in our own city. We have a pending request to increase her pay to make up for this inequity. The request is likely going to be denied due to a lack of funding. We are repeating history because our current pay would not be competitive to attract qualified candidates if she left. We would then be forced to pay more to get a qualified candidate to take the position. This is one of the many examples of an incomprehensible system, existing personnel leaving the city, with the city then forced to raise the pay for the vacant positions so that we can attract qualified candidates. I will tell you some of the things I do, not to draw attention to myself. The intent is to give you examples that are probably emblematic of what other people do in this city. I also don't want to diminish the sacrifices and things you do as council members. I spoke about the opioid crisis at a national conference in Atlanta, Florida in May as part of my official duties. I paid for it out of my own pocket, my travel expenses. I have not replaced my robe in almost 10 years. It has been cleaned and repaired over time, but there are still repairs that are needed. I use a black permanent marker to cover defects. I do not want a new robe because I feel that it's in solidarity with the taxpayers and with the people that I see in court that are indigent. Thank you for the Just Where Case Management System that you gave us a few years back. But I was forced to work until 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning for months during the development phase because we didn't have adequate IT staff. I also worked many extra hours last year and earlier this year to upgrade and enhance that system. To this day, I'm the only city employee that knows fully how to create automated documents because of that shortage of staff and IT. I believe that IT is the best department in the city because they're magicians, so I don't mean to diminish their efforts. I drive to other sites to attend meetings. I don't request reimbursement. Judge Robertson and I pay for occasional business lunches with our management team out of our own pockets, and I've even bought Orca cards for defendants through community court out of my own money. One of my staff members told me last week that she was proud to work at our court. That feeling on her part did not happen by accident. It happened because of an ethic that puts staff first, just as I am doing tonight. My theory is that I owe a high duty to the public and that my staff are the instruments of service to fulfill that duty. The public is not served if my staff feels unappreciated and devalued. By state law, I have the authority to hire and fire. I'm going to abbreviate some of this. I have the authority to hire and fire, but you, under state law, set the salary and benefits of my staff. I'm just asking that you do that. I ask you deliberate to consider, also when you deliberate, consider the message you send to our staff.
Stephen, hold on. I'm sorry, Your Honor. Let's add three more minutes as a director. Let's add, is three and a half?
I'm an elected official, actually. Not a director.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So I'm just asking as you deliberate to consider the message you send to people when you can't find money to pay them, but you can find money to do other things. I'm not saying you can't do other things. I'm suggesting that you have to be cognizant of that when you do that and have a message for them about the importance of doing the other things. I'll turn to the other requests. We asked for $7,000 to increase our security. I'm grateful, forever grateful, to Mayor Farrell and to Deputy Mayor Honda for the fight they put up to get us extra money for security and to enhance our security. And I just want us to keep pace with the increased cost. The $5,000 request for the pilot project, I hope that's not too much to ask. It's one-time funding to enhance what we're doing in community court. Other cities spent tens of thousands of dollars to start a community court. We did it with nothing. And so $5,000 is not too much to ask for, to help us with a pilot project that hopefully will lead to greater things. I appreciate what you do. I admire what you do because I've been in your position as a school board member, not in the same exact position, and I do not envy your position. But please, as you deliberate on this budget, consider those issues I brought up. And I very much appreciate the opportunity and the extra time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And I'll give the written comments to...
All right. Thank you very much. And I just want to remind everybody, one of the things that Ade and I have agreed is that while we do have the anticipated $2 million coming from the savings from the SCORE departure, we are planning on doing the comprehensive salary survey and workload study in 2019 as soon as possible. So we have made sure that that is a priority, and certainly the administrator position will be analyzed under that in regard to comparing all the employees in the city to make sure they're justly compensated. So, and I do want to advise everybody, my understanding it's now in the mirror, but we did, today, it was announced that the Superior Court in King County did rule today on summary judgment in favor of the city with regard to the Lake Haven water and sewer dispute and going on. And so it'll be now whether the Lake Haven Utility District will seek to appeal that decision up to either the appellate court or the State Supreme Court. So we'll keep the community updated, but we did win by summary judgment today in Superior Court. And we notified you by the council members, and I believe it's in the mirror now. Okay, so now we've got some, I'm going to go ahead and read off individuals that have submitted pink sheets. And we also have the last one as a written comment. All right, on deck is Dana Holloway, Diana Noble-Gilliverd, Denise Christensen, Scott Chase, Mike Colleton, for now.
Good evening. My name is Dana Holloway, and I am shocked at the City of Federal Way's current financial shortfall situation. Maybe the city should hire a chief administrative officer with experience in finance and administration and accounting, as called out in Federal Way Revised Code 2.11.020. There are basic and essential services the city must provide within the limited city revenue. Most city departments have been running understaffed for years while the workload has increased. The city is losing good experienced staff members because they can get higher wages and benefits and lighter workload by going to another city in the Puget Sound area. The existing workload then falls on even fewer staff members to accomplish, putting more pressure on the remaining employees. If the wages and workload issues are not addressed, more city employees will leave, impacting the ability to run the city and provide basic and essential services. I believe the top priority should be a competitive, market-competitive employee wages and workload, address the noise and toxic emissions caused by Sea-Tac Airport, crime and public safety, and the city being fully staffed, including police officers. When operating funds are tight, as they are now, the decisions of what is included in the budget is more critical. Choose wisely. Thank you.
Diana Noble-Gilliverd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The clerk will be handing out a sheet that I have prepared for you that coincides with my message. My voice is hoarse, and so I'm not going to talk very long. But I want to talk to you about Proposition 1, because it relates to the amount of monies that the city collects regarding public safety and our officers. In 2006, the voters of Federal Way agreed by 62.39% to approve an additional utility tax to pay for, as the ballot title says, additional utility tax to levy to enhance police and community safety. So the Federal Way City Council passed Ordinance 06532 to ask the voters to enhance police and community safety with an additional levy tax. This proposition would fund 18 additional police officers. It would also add court and supporting staff to handle the increased workload generated from these officers, including a .5 judge position, add one code enforcement officer and one park maintenance worker, and fund security resources to assist police in resolving code violations and identifying and preventing crimes in parks and on city facilities. Shall the city levy an additional 1.75% utility tax pursuant to RCW 35.21.870? The voters said yes, over 62%. There have been many changes in our city since 2006. Some of them good, some of them not so good. When it comes to public safety, that is a high priority for the citizens, and it is for me also. We have things now that are going on in our city that we did not have in 2006, including the homeless population, the encampments. We had drug trafficking, drug use, and we have an increase in property crime. We also have an increased population since then, too, and there's more development on its way. So as you consider the budget, I would like to see you bring us up to the standard that the people of Federal Way expect as far as the level of police officers. Do not cut those positions, please. Thank you.
Denise Christensen.
Good evening. My husband and Harold and I have lived in Federal Way in the same house for 47 years. We lived there happily and peacefully until about the beginning of this month, when my husband had to notify the police department that there was a homeless encampment in the woods in our property. We sent pictures to the police department, the mayor, every council member. We received quick replies from everyone on the council, and we were hopeful that we would receive, or that we would receive some assistance in this matter. The people who were living there left, thanks to the quick action from the police department, but they left a horrendous mess. We were told that hopefully there would be a voucher to help us clean this up, and in an email from Steven Neal, who oversees the police department's efforts regarding homeless issues, we were told the city has other options as well regarding assistance in these types of cases, and someone will be in contact with you with those options. Well, unfortunately, the contact we received was a letter from Valerie Johnson, who is in the code compliance office, telling us that we needed to clean it up ourselves, or the city would clean it up and put a lien on our property. We are unable to clean it up ourselves. My husband is 73 years old. I'm approaching that. I'm not there yet, but I'm a senior citizen. When I told Valerie this, that we couldn't clean it up ourselves, and I'm not going to risk my family's health to have them do it because it is a health issue, she said, "Well, just hire a contractor." My husband's income is a very small social security check. I work for a small private school as a teacher, so my income isn't that much. And I was hoping to be able to retire at the end of this year. Hiring a contractor is not in our budget. But she said, "If we don't do this, the city will do it and put a lien on our property." I want you to all put yourself in our places and think, how would you feel if somebody came with a truckload of garbage, humid waste, and hazardous materials, dumped it in your backyard, and said, "Okay, clean it up"? We feel right now we're being punished because the only reason the city even knew about this is because we reached out for help. The encampment could not be seen from the road. We could see it from our deck, and we could hear the yelling and shouting. If you want to add funding, we would request that you put funding to help private property owners like ourselves clean this up and do something to prevent this from happening to other people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming. We'll talk with Brian Davis, and actually, Brian is going to reach out with you. If you haven't actually personally spoken with Brian, he's here now, the Director of Community Development, and we'll also talk with legal counsel about this. We'll be in touch. Thank you. And thank you for letting us know about this. You did absolutely the right thing, because as soon as we knew about it, we could get Steve Neal involved, we could get the police involved. Most important thing is for your, you know, for your safety of your area, and then we'll get this figured out. But let's communicate, okay? Thank you. And Brian's in the back of the room, but he'll communicate with you. Denise Christensen, oh, sorry. I already said that. Sorry. Scott Chase. And then Mike Colleton.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Scott Chase. I've lived in Federal Way for 32 years. I live behind the Quad Shopping Center near First and 330th. Just this past week, there were three separate violent crimes committed in just this one area on First Avenue. I am also the Neighborhood Watch Leader for the Campus Woods area with about 550 homes. I'm here to comment on the police department budget. The community as a whole is very concerned about Federal Way crime, especially property crime, but also new problems like increased homelessness and panhandling, and increased gang activity, and regular sounds of gunfire throughout our city. Property crime in Federal Way is twice the national average. Auto thefts are about four times national average. Instead of 250 vehicle thefts a year, we have 1,000. The public especially feels the effects of all the property crime. The new police budget needs to include funding for more officers. Federal Way has a ratio of 1.36 officers per 1,000 residents. Washington is even higher at 1.44. The U.S. average is even higher at 1.6. The City of Tacoma is at 1.6, and Tacoma has similar theft and vehicle theft rates as Federal Way. Back around 2007, 8, 9, 10, Federal Way had an increased officer ratio, over 1.5 officers per 1,000 residents. Once that happened, vehicle theft rates went from about 2,000 per year to just 650 per year per 100,000 residents. But once the officer ratio dropped again after 2010, vehicle thefts climbed back up to 1,000. The message here, you get what you pay for. The more officers means less crime. And residents and business owners are very concerned about the current levels of crime in Federal Way. Federal Way's crime is higher than both the Washington average and national average. Yet, our officer ratios are lower than both the Washington average and national average. That just doesn't make sense. We have higher crime than Washington, so we should have more officers than Washington's 1.44 ratio. We should be funding at least 1.5 officers again, like we did around 2009. It only makes sense to have that higher ratio again. The City of Federal Way needs more officers. Please increase the budget proposal for the police department to allow for that higher ratio of 1.5 officers. The number of officers should really be 148 sworn officers, not 134. Thank you.
Mike Colleton.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Mike Colleton. I'm a technology executive and a father. I'd like to address the city's ban, I think it's the ban, on marijuana licenses in the city. My key point is that I believe we're at a point in time where the city should consider lifting the restriction for the benefit of the community. As a casual marijuana user, I found it to be a refreshing alternative to other choices in the marketplace. I'm not alone in my view. Current statistics reflect that 66% of the U.S. population is in favor of the legalization of marijuana. Studies have shown that marijuana is less addictive than alcohol, is not linked to violence as alcohol is, and with the studies to date, there's been no indication of any negative health effects, assuming, as with alcohol, moderate use. There's also a concern about impact on the community. As a technology executive, I've had the opportunity to travel the world, seeing how other communities live. I'm sure you're aware that Amsterdam is a city where marijuana is a legalized substance. The impact of this in their society is similar to having a beer. It's a choice of the individual, key point, the individual, that does not cause impact to their society. If you're there, which I have been, you'd witness a shopping area filled with retails, retail shops, nice restaurants, families. retail shops, nice restaurants, families, and, yes, marijuana. The use of marijuana fundamentally is a non-issue. It's the same model I'm seeing with cities in Bugeous Sound. I work in Bellevue, where the product is readily available, the stores are clean, the clientele consisting of professional workers, young adults, people of the community, and I'm certain you would see the same here in the city of Federal Way. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Nathaniel Wannemaker. And I have two pink sheets filled out by Nathaniel, for some reason.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council, my name is Nathaniel Wannemaker, and I would like to address the city's ban on retail marijuana stores. My perspective is rather unique due to my life experience as a nineteen-year-old and recent high school graduate, which is radically different than what the adults say when they come before you and testify about the availability of marijuana to young people. In the years prior to the legalization of marijuana, I can recall back to when I was twelve years old and marijuana was readily available. It was provided by what you would call street dealers, who were willing and able to sell marijuana and any other drug they had in their possession to anyone with the money. I could even describe the gang and cartel that controlled the marijuana market, but time prohibits going into that much detail. Once the recreational marijuana stores opened, sure, marijuana was still available, but the stores changed. It now became available via friends and family rather than street dealers. I went to school on the East Side, and once the recreational stores opened, the street dealers stopped selling marijuana. We were no longer offered drugs like meth and heroin when we purchased marijuana. While you might be surprised and outraged that marijuana is so readily available, let me make two points very clear. First, after the opening of retail stores, marijuana was not more available because it was already so easy to obtain. It would have been nearly impossible for marijuana to become more available. It just became available through a different source. Second, by changing the source and taking the sales out of the hands of the street dealers, the progression from marijuana to harder and more illicit drugs has decreased. How many adults come before you and testify about the evils of marijuana stores? And I would wager that there are even council members or council staff that believe they were taking the high road by assuming that not allowing marijuana stores in their community will protect their youth. Speaking from the youth point of view, and a person who has dealt with the reality of availability of marijuana to young people, I know what I'm talking about. I've been there. Don't deceive yourself. Marijuana, like alcohol, is going to be consumed, and unfortunately, it will be consumed at times by people under twenty-one. The only question is, where are they going to get it from? Friends and family or street dealers? Your choice is clear. You either support inadvertently the illegal drug organizations and their desire to push harder and more destructive drugs to their customers, or you fight the illegal drug organizations and help to keep street dealers from pushing harder drugs to kids. Don't believe that there is any virtue in opposing recreational marijuana stores in your community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Lamont Stiles. And after that, I don't, I've got the, as Mr. Stiles makes his way up here, I'll hand forward a, to the city clerk, a written comment by Debbie Smith to be read after Mr. Stiles speaks.
Hello, Council, Mayor. Basically, oh, hold on.
As I like to say, take two.
Sorry about that. I forgot my notes. I wanted to be organized. So, yeah, basically, I just wanted to talk about, as you guys discuss and finalize the budget, basically, youth programs, there are many ways to go about crime. If you're talking about youth, having something for them to do would be in the benefit of the city according to the committee recommendations for violence prevention. Also entrepreneurship, I heard Highline was here a couple of times, the SBDC, there are a lot of empty spaces around here, so maybe giving owners incentive to lease these spaces out. The zero base, I just feel like we, we, this is a serious situation, and we want to, if we're in a crisis, according to, you know, the budget and everything, then we have to look at everything, and not just a couple people, but everybody has to be versed and on the same page as far as did we do enough to bring these resources to the city. And that just goes into, if we're going to manage and have people in different positions, then we have to make sure that these people are efficient and doing whatever it is that they're supposed to do. I'm not saying that there are adequate staffing issues that need to be handled, but we're definitely top-heavy, and we need to look at maybe not getting the number-one guy, but the best guy that is going to be for Federal Way, because we have a lot of talent, we have a lot of situations or people out here that can get these jobs done. When you look at, when I looked at different positions that were for, that were available, I was like, man, regardless of who thinks it's a good living or not, it looked like some of those positions were well-paid. Again, with a day, giving recommendations and whatnot by getting us in this situation with SCORE, with all of these different situations that have basically caused this, I think that we need to deliberate and really be good stewards of the city's money and take this like it was our own money and do the right thing with it. Homelessness, I was in Tacoma, and they were saying that they had allotted like a hundred and something thousand, I think it was 120,000, to homelessness. I'm not for sure in this budget whether that was addressed, but this is a statewide situation, so I'm knowing we're talking to other cities and whatnot, and just want to know what was going on with that, and just make sure that it's a commitment to the whole city as far as resources and how we go about attacking the different issues in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we've got the letter.
An email from Debbie Smith, and it reads, "I wanted to take a moment to add my comments for the upcoming meeting that I won't be able to attend. I'm a homeowner and single parent of a nine-year-old girl. I have not personally been the victim of crime. To be clear, I try to keep myself in the best situations and be aware of my surroundings and always park my car in the garage. I don't leave things to be taken out in the open and keep an eye on my neighborhood activity. I do, however, feel like there are multiple stores that I can no longer shop at due to the anxiety it causes to be there. Both Federal Way Safeways have multiple people stealing when I shop there right in front of my eyes, and the staff is not allowed to do anything. I do not feel safe in most of our parking lots. The increased number of people wandering the parking lots that are so bold to come straight to your car window asking for money or follow you, talking to you in the parking lot, is insane. I paint rocks to hide around Federal Way. I go to Home Depot about once a week and get a bag of rocks, maybe spend ten minutes there. I'd love to go into Home Depot and not see someone running out the front door with something. This happens all the time. I grew up here, played outside without having to be in the sight distance of my parents. I used to love it here. I now own a home that I'm in pretty good financial position in, but the cost would be my safety, is how I now feel. I don't dare to go out when it's dark, which is tough in the winter when it's dark majority of the time when I get off work. I know a lot of people who have had property crime happen to them, and the police never arrive. While I understand they're busy doing other things that are more important or take higher priority, it's extremely concerning that we don't have the staff to address everyone's unsafe situation. It's extremely concerning that we even have to have a meeting to decide whether or not we need more police on duty. Is it not obvious? Our property crime is higher than Seattle and Tacoma. Our property crime scaled from one, low crime, to 100, high crime, is currently 67.3. Where do you think this is coming from? It's the homeless people addicted to drugs that are flooding our streets and neighborhoods. It's heartbreaking that my nine-year-old now knows what an addict looks like, high because she sees it daily, and to not touch needles because they see those daily, and she has to be afraid to go into the store because she's been in the car when we've been approached. It's unacceptable, especially with the cost of living here. Thank you for listening, Debbie."
All right. Thank you. That completes the pink sheets that I've received. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, hearing none. Now, we're on to the council discussion deliberation. Ade, could I have, yes, Deanie, Councilmember DuKlo.
I'd like to do it now because it's pretty much what people said here.
And very good. And before you, as you start to talk, Ade, can I have you, what we're going to do at the, we're going to have you come to the podium and what you did at the last meeting to sort of keep track of suggestions, and that way we can track it. So, go ahead and start getting ready, and then we'll turn it over to Councilmember DuKlo, who's also Chair of our Finance Committee.
And I'm reading this on behalf of the police department and others here in the city about the overtime issue with the police department. I think the last thing we want to do is reduce patrols and other critical public safety initiatives if we're trying to keep people safe in this community. We're a growing city, and overtime is the only existing, right now, mechanism to pay for mandatory court increases for officers who work night shifts or weekends, and this is not discretionary spending. Prop one, you heard about earlier, so I will skip that, because it did give us 137 police officer positions with a population of 84,700. That was a policing ratio of 1.61 officers per thousand. Eleven years later, we have still failed to reach that police officer number that we promised, that was promised to the people who voted for an increase in taxes to pay that. In 2017, we had 137 police officers. Currently, the authorized number is 134, for a population of 97,440. That's 1.37 officers per thousand population in 2018. Historically, in the past, we've tried to maintain a ratio of 1.4 officers per thousand population. We're currently operating with less police protection than we had prior to the recession of 2018, 2008 through 12. Soon, this city will grow to be 100,000 people. We will need a minimum of 140 police officers to maintain a ratio of 1.4 officers per thousand, which is still be lower than the Prop one model. And my final thought, we heard the chief testify in his recently, by far the most common complaint we get about police services is, it isn't enough. Not enough patrol in the neighborhoods, not enough traffic enforcement on our roadways, waiting too long for an officer to show up to take an auto theft report, and on, and on, and on. Now is not the time to reduce police resources and make that worse for our constituents. That's why, again, we need to look at more revenue coming into the city, and we need to enhance our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DuKlo. I do want to, just as a matter of clarification, I know this issue about Prop one comes up during Budget's I-Gos, and the Prop one initiative, there are actually flows of money that come in, and the officers that were hired as a result of that or that are funded by that are still put in the budget. But what has been put forth is that, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't mandate, well, what we had to do during the Great Recession is reduce our number of officers down to 122. We were at a low point of 122, and it's taken, actually, the past, I think, five or six years to ratchet up, essentially, two or three at a time, and now we have finally gotten ourselves back up to 134, from which was a low at 122. Obviously, that was a big target as well for us when we had the homicides in 2016, and the community was really responding and demanding that. So, we're working on that, and that's, and thank you very much for that, for those comments. And I also want to give some background in regard to what people see on the screen right there is, was really the byproduct or the product that was put out as a result of the last budget meeting from the 23rd. Now, one of the things I wanted to do to be a partner with the council and to help out in regard to freeing up some money, as I was listening carefully to the discussions I've heard with the council, both on and off the dais, and I wanted, I also promised to tell the public as well that if any communications were sent out to the council, that we would advise the community as well. So, following, excuse me, following last week's meeting, I conferred with our, I conferred with Ade, our Finance Director, and it seemed to me that, based on the consideration, discussions, that there were some, that there appeared to be some support, I don't know if there's a majority support, for the Federal Way Youth Action Team and also for the South King County Housing Consortium. And so then, you know, obviously, as we have stated, that the budget was incredibly tight. What I didn't want to do is just sit up here and try to let the council figure out, if you were trying to free up some money, where would that, you know, where would that money come from? And so, Ade and I met, and we worked very, very assiduously to identify certain sources. One of the things I want to let you know in regard to the Federal Way Youth Action Team, we were looking at a potential $25,000 figure, and with regard to the consortium, the housing consortium, remember, if you will, on that outline, that the lower level was 26,000 and the higher level was 34,000. I assumed the 26,000, the lower figure. So, I asked Ade, and Ade and I went through the budget in several different areas, and we identified, can you go back to that list you just had up? Identified where, if we wanted to free up $51,000 in the budget, where would that come from? And those items are honing in on the police, and while this is a sensitive subject, you know, with Chief Wong and the department, we took a look at historically about these particular line items and about where we're at, usually with the balances. And, but I've committed to Chief Wong that, once, I just want to tell you that if we, every year at the end when we reconcile the books, there's usually a little bit, you know, left over, because the budget is a, is an approximation or a, is our estimates, essentially. And so, if we, while we're proposing to take this money out, if the council proposed to do that, we could backfill that in. But anyway, let me explain where $51,000 would come from in the budget, in the police budget. Overtime, field operations, police, 11,000, and that was just one particular area. Other operating supplies, 10,000. Clothing and footwear, 10,000. These are, these actually, there are balances that would remain. These are usually about a half or a third of these line items. Clothing and footwear, again, 10,000. Conferences, seminars, 5,000, and miscellaneous services and charges for a total of $51,000. I wanted to provide that as an information for you, just to get the conversation started, but, Council, these are your deliberations, and I will open it up for, I want to give you that information. I also want to make sure that Ade is here to help us record moving forward. And if, I would also, one other suggestion, that if there appears to be, we don't necessarily need to make a motion to amend the proposed budget at this stage, but just like we did with setting a date for today's hearing, we could, by consensus, get an idea that we could then get the budget ready to be amended at the next budget hearing. Does that make sense? That if I, if we hear consensus among the council about cutting this or adding this, that that can be accomplished without a formalized vote? I just want to help council to know that, you know, obviously, the goal is to come to some sort of consensus, or at least a majority, moving forward in the budget. With that, I'll stop talking, and Councilmember DuKlo.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about it, because we've been discussing this in the Revenue Enhancement Committee.
Right.
And the number-one subject brought up, and in the first place, was allowing marijuana store in the city of Federal Way, which would bring money in to the city very quickly. And I think that's something that the council needs to have a discussion on.
Now, let's quantify that. Ade, do you, I know that we've heard some different numbers, and then we've got Councilmember Copeng. Before we go any further, we've heard some varying degrees of numbers, and I think that there was notice that there's at least three or four potential licenses that would be offered. How, just out of curiosity, to make sure everybody, to make sure the public and the council knows what we're talking about, is there an approximation for what the city's share in that would be if the council were to do that?
I think at the last federal meeting, the gentleman made some proposal, but the caution that I'd like to give to the council is, what we're using the revenue that the surrounding stores are making. When we create three or four stores in Federal Way, it will draw from those stores that are now. So, it's not as if we would develop a new So it's not as if we would develop a new market. So it will now be exactly the same amount that our surrounding stores are making. It will draw from them, it will be some of the citizens, our citizens.
What surrounding stores are you talking about?
I think the gentleman that made a presentation of FedRA is throwing out some numbers. So what I'm trying to share with the Council is whatever the number is, is going to be lower than the average that they are suggesting now because you are increasing the number of stores without necessarily increasing the number of customers.
Well, we're not talking about opening up at three or four stores. We're talking about maybe opening one in the City of Federal Way so people don't have to travel.
Actually, Dini, I think that the state, I think the state has actually, before we did, I think there were four provisional licenses that were offered, and that's why I wanted to try to get our finger on that. I think that letters were sent from the state, if I'm understanding correctly. Ryan?
That's correct. So I believe Federal Way has authorized four licenses. They've already been issued by lottery. We don't have control over how many stores are built. The state controls how many stores are authorized in the city. All the city council can do is either zone or not zone the use. So if the use is zoned and four stores will fit in those zones, then four stores can be built.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that four stores would open up.
Correct.
Well, they've got the state licenses. I've got Councilmember Copeng's light that's on. Councilmember Copeng?
I'm sorry, I was going to talk about the budget.
Oh, okay, so let's go ahead. So Councilmember DuKlo, were you, did you have another? Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, you know, Aday, I know since you, not to put you on the spot, and with all due respect, I know I sent you an email asking for an assessment of, because I am concerned, Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad you mentioned this, that we've heard a lot of numbers, and while I respect that, I want to know from you as our Chief Financial Officer, what are we really looking at here in the City of Federal Way? I don't care about Pialup, I don't care about other cities that do marijuana stores or what their revenue is, but I want to know what does it look like here?
Okay.
And if I'm understanding you correctly, what you just stated was we're opening up more opportunities for pot stores, therefore, there could be a potential of less revenue coming in because there could be more stores available. Is that correct?
What I'm saying is, let's assume there's 1,000 customers distributed across the area. There may be now 10 stores are serving that 1,000 customers. If you add one more store, now you are dividing that 1,000 customers among 11 stores instead of 10. Yes, there may be a small increase in the number of customers, but, you know, if the Council is asking the mayor to look into this, it's something that, you know, if it's something serious that the Council is looking at, that, you know, is something that we'll be glad to spend time to look for and bring some more definite numbers.
Councilmember DuKlo, then Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Honda, then Councilmember Copeng.
I would like us to look into this and get some actual facts and figures and how much. I mean, we had something that Aday put together for us a while back about how much we might potentially take, and I thought it was about 100, 150,000. Our revenue situation is dire, and we need to look at everything, and I think this is one of the things that we can look at. Things have changed about marijuana, and I know we have right now, there's a proviso out there with the moratorium on it, but I think that's something that we should investigate, at least get facts and information, and then present it back to the Council.
Well, we'll get that information, and we're going to get that out to the Council, and then we'll make sure that we provide it to the public as well in regard to what those figures are. Okay, we've got Deputy Mayor Honda, Councilmember Copeng, and then Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, thank you, Mip, thank you, Councilmember Copeng, for letting me speak now. Last night, we had a Revenue FedRA special meeting, and at the conclusion of the meeting, we had five ideas that we were going to approach the mayor about having staff make staff reports. And Dini and I will be talking to you about that, and one was marijuana stores.
Yep.
So the other four, I don't have the list with me, and I don't want to say something that isn't on the list, but, yeah. But we will be talking with you because as Counsel, we can't direct staff, and we would like to have staff reports on the items that we talked about.
Okay.
And then have them given to us at a special, probably a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Copeng?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think it's very important for us to have a dialogue on ways to increase revenue, but getting back to the budget that we have in front of us right now, I wanted to just reemphasize again the importance that I see in at least funding the Federal Way Youth Action Team up to the $30,000 level that they were suggesting for the programming, does not cover the staff. When the Violence Prevention Coalition Steering Committee made their recommendations, they made those recommendations, or when the city received those recommendations and they were approved both through the Parks and Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee that I chaired at the time, and through the full Council, we really made, we approved, or we approved the recommendations implementation, understanding that the city itself could not necessarily be the implementer. But by putting that, by putting out that report and making it widely disseminated in the community and endorsing it as a city, basically release the energy necessary for other members of the community to see the opportunity to exercise within their passion and abilities, solutions for our community in the area, in different areas that were addressed by the Violence Prevention Coalition Steering Committee recommendations. I got to tell you, I am very pleased with the efforts that have been done by the Federal Way Youth Action Team and the engagement they've had in the community as a whole, and the program that they've developed. We had, I think, a very informed and comprehensive report at the last Parks and Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee meeting, now chaired by Councilmember Johnson and, which I serve on along with Councilmember Moore. And in that meeting, they really did talk about the things that they have done and are doing that are engaging the youth in our community in a very positive way. And I think for us as a Council to recognize that action and to really, I think, take a nice step forward, it's not a complete step forward, but a good step forward in continuing to look at ways to partner with members of the community to address the needs that were illustrated in the recommendations by the Violence Prevention Coalition Steering Committee. So again, I just, I hope the Council will take that, the opportunity to send that message to the community that we are appreciative of the efforts that are being done and that we recognize good effort when it's out there and that we want to see programs like this continue to be birthed in the community where there is need, but the ones that are up and running, that they are supported and encouraged. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to give a little context on a couple of things. So kind of going back to Dini's point, so I talked with Deputy Mayor Fife yesterday. They're making $75,000 a year of marijuana stores with one store, and they have three other tribal stores in that city. So that's just a little context. They're about the 10th of the size of Federal Way in Fife, population size. So that's just a little context for money-wise where we could be looking at, but I digress on that. Talking about the Youth Action Team, just a little bit of information. So the Youth Action Team actually serves four organizations within one coalition. So Positive Outcomes Program, Hype, Game of Life, and the last one is Ambition is Priceless. And so they do workshops for students on student engagement, academic success, entrepreneurship. So we're basically asking for $25,000 for four programs. They did present at our committee last week, and they asked for 50,000, so this would be servicing about half of that. So not the, like Councilmember Copeng mentioned, not the staff position, but the actual programming. So I think this could be a really good start for us, but it's definitely just a drop in the bucket, I think. And I did want to kind of talk a little bit about some of the information as it relates to the police. So I did want to ask my colleagues, like, what are we defining as effective and efficient within our departments? Because I think that's a question that we have to ask ourselves. If Chief Wong's saying that in 2018 so far, 17%, we're down 17% in crime, what are we saying that we need to increase police numbers for? I just want to ask that question. And so I want us to try to be thinking about these things before making the decisions. I'm not saying we don't need to, but I just want us to be thinking about that because these are numbers that are being thrown out to the public, and so it just looks, it's confusing because it's like, if crime's going down, why are we saying, what are we doing to make it go up? Like, why are we asking for it? So.
It's a great point, Councilmember Johnson. One of the things, I think that tees up a good policy discussion, and I did not, after Mr. Chase and we read the letter or heard the letter, I didn't ask the Chief to weigh in, but maybe this would be a good time about that issue because we hear from Mr. Chase about these statistics about where Federal Way is at in regard to statewide and some of those statistics. And then also, there was something actually that was said in regard to property crimes in comparison to Seattle and some other areas. So is that okay? Does everybody want to hear from the Chief real quick about some of those issues that have been raised?
Can I add a question to that also?
Yes.
So with Proposition one that just Diana just mentioned, where are we in compliance? Or are we following that?
We're in complete compliance. We are in absolute, complete legal compliance. But what that did not do, and I was starting to say that, is that didn't mean that we had to keep the number of officers at 136. It just meant that, it just basically said that we're going to fund these number of officers, but we were not at a position to fund at 136 when the Great Recession. We had to, you know, I think by necessity, based on where we're at, we dropped that down, but we have been crawling our way back, really working our way back to that 134, 136 number. And so that's where that's at. But like the positions that are identified, we are in complete legal compliance with Proposition one.
But I think what we're going to hear now is based on the population as well, right?
That's right.
Okay.
And actually, the Deputy Mayor wants to say something.
Earlier this week, I asked for a legal opinion on Prop one from Ryan.
Yeah.
And he responded only to me, but it would be okay if he responded with that email to everyone because I wanted to know if we were within the legal realm of, you know, because the voters voted for it, if we had to continue to have this number of officers. And he had quite the email, so it would be okay to send that out to everybody.
Do you want to summarize it just real briefly?
It was pretty long, but he would do a much better job of summarizing it than me.
All right. Ryan, before we go to the Chief, can you, let's talk about Prop one. It's an issue that, you know, previous Councilmembers have talked about, have honed in on, that community activists and citizens that voted for this sometimes zero in on. Can you?
So I would, I'll summarize it. I don't want to, this is a legal question that's been asked many times throughout the history of Prop one. Both the prior city attorney, Pat Richardson, and I have both written memos on this. I don't want to get into the content of those memos, but in summary, there's kind of an aggressive or a more liberal interpretation that says the justification used to pass Prop one does not bind future Councilmembers on the use of that money at all, and that was the position that Pat Richardson took, meaning it's impossible to be out of compliance with Prop one. At the time, that was the justification used, but that does not bind future Councilmembers as to how the money's used in the future. I've taken a more conservative approach in my advice, and that is it's best to use this money for police purposes, but what is clear from any interpretation is that neither the public nor any sitting Councilmember can bind future Councilmembers on staffing levels. That is not something that is lawful. We need, Council needs the flexibility to be able to respond to future circumstances, future budgets, future downturns in the economy. It is not legal or appropriate for a Council to try to bind a future Council on staffing levels.
That being said.
We have used all of the money for Prop one. We actually earmarked it and set it aside in a separate account in the accounting system, and it's all being used for the enumerated purposes that are in Prop one.
Actually, Mayor, if you look at page D13, dog 13, actually, the city is using other money to fund all the positions that are supposed to be funded out of Prop one. So based on 2019 proposal, we will be transferring additional 760,000 into Prop one fund in order to be able to fund all the police, the Police Department, the Court, the, all the positions or departments that are spelled out in the Prop one. So yes, as of the time that Prop one was passed, the salary that we're paying today is not what we were paying then. So to think that Prop one should have cured everything then and cured everything now, that is not really.
But I think it does, we work for, every one of us up here, and everybody who works for the city, works for the benefit of the public, and I think the citizen comment that was raised is, is we need to be faithful, you know, to that vote and to make sure that I can, while there is a different legal interpretation, ever since I've been here, both as a Council member, Deputy Mayor and Mayor, we've always been, we've always made sure that we hold the commitment we made to the voters sacrosanct and that we staff that. What is not, though, is that 136 number, which we just couldn't, at that time, we just could not, we had to really drastically cut back services and personnel as a result of the Great Recession, and we're just, we're just, again, climbing out of that. And I do want to say that there's been some talk about, you know, whether this is a desperate situation. You know, the proposed budget does not lay off one person, not one. The proposed budget that we put forward actually sets aside a 2% COLA for nonrepresented employees and also makes sure that there's latitude for the bargaining unit, which is the Police Department. And so, you know, we actually are at, what we do need to do, though, is have an awareness that we absolutely need to get our arms around this fair pay, and not compared to the private sector, but in compared to our very neighboring city governments, and that that's where we're losing these employees, that they can get $1,000 more a month from going to the city right over our boundaries. And so that's why we have, and, you know, I think that there was some hesitation previously to getting this salary survey done because I think we were afraid of the answer, but, you know, as I used to say at my prior job as a prosecutor, you know, we're in the truth business, and we can't be afraid of what the truth is. We're going to figure it out, we're going to deal with it, and then develop a plan to address it. But if our, if the legal situation with Lake Haven continues and we win on the appellate level, should they proceed, we'll have that million plus the $2 million from SCORE, that'll be $3 million a year in our coffers. That's $6 million in the biennium. So I want to say that, I think it's very critical. I think that one of the strategy, I want to let everybody know, that the strategy that we're employing, and I let the Council know in an email when I let them know about this calculation, was that while we've got that, contrary to a public comment that was made at the last Budget Meeting, we have not spent that $2 million that we're expecting from SCORE. We have actually scrupulously unspent it because we need to make sure, the first thing we need to do is, once we get the salary survey, is figure out, and workload study, where do we need to fill in? And that's why the, what I would suggest to the Council, but it's up to you, is figure out where workload-wise and salary-wise, where does that money need to go? And then what's left over, once we figure that out, then how much is left for new positions? And I think that's a much more, you know, that money could go very fastly, but that money is not spent yet, and that's why that additional million from Lake Haven or from the water and super tax is going to be very important. Councilmember DuKlo, and then the Chief.
Oh, I was just going to say then, we ought to put some money aside and not spend it all so that we have reserves. We need to establish a reserve account.
Right. I think that's very wise, Councilmember DuKlo, that even when we consider the salary adjustments and some of the new positions, be it IT and CD and some of these other things, that we better leave ourselves a cushion so we're not, our backs not against the wall during the next cycle.
I would say, when I was at the multi-service center, we did that, and we did it through our housing development. We would take 50% of the earnings that we made on it to put into the operations and 50% into a savings account, and when I left, it was pretty close to a million.
Well, we are very fortunate to have Aday as an international, you know, officer with, you know, the GFOA. with, you know, the GFOA and his, he and I have gone through, squeezed another million dollars out of this budget. And that's what we did with the zero-based budgeting, is to make sure that we would not have to lay people off and go under strategic reserves. Councilmember Kopeck.
I just want to also say that we'll have about $6 to $8 million in deferred maintenance and improvements that need to be addressed as well.
That's right.
For the future. So, we do need to start accruing money aside for that type of improvement.
That's right. And then that's.
Or maintenance as well.
And whether you guys want to do that in this, in this environment at this time or at the budget retreat, talk about what that is to start putting that away. Chief Wong.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2015 and 2016, our city experienced rapid growth. In 2016, we were the fourth fastest-growing city in the state of Washington. We added nearly 3,000 people. Along with that population growth and other variables, our crime skyrocketed significantly high in 2016. Addition to good police work and working with other stakeholders in the community, in 2017, we did see a 10% crime reduction, overall crime reduction of 10% in 2017. Just to give you the number, our workload in 2016, we had nine homicides. So essentially, we weren't really working any property crimes. We were shifting resources in the police department to work the homicides. 2017, we did a little better. We had seven overall homicides. So, this year, we had one manslaughter case year-to-date. So, it gives you an idea, now our staff can work on other issues within the police department. So, we've been able to address some property crimes and other crimes. When you have that type of crime, violent crime, in a police organization our size, we're really not working any cases other than the violent crimes. So, this year, in part, again, because of good police work and other variables, economy's doing really well, we're seeing an overall crime reduction of 17% from 2016. So, we are doing better as a community. And I can tell you as a police chief, I feel better about that. Having said that, I can tell you that we still have challenges in our community. Just because we're down 17%, I think we need to be strategic about our allocation of staffing and resources. If I came to you three months from now and said our crime is up 10%, are we going to all of a sudden add five more officers? Crime is going to go up and down. We have, if we get a hotspot or we get a complaint from a residential area or business community, we put our resources there to solve the problem, and we're doing that every day. And I stated this during the budget process, the biggest complaint that I get as a police chief, my deputy chiefs, commanders, officers, is that we don't have enough resources to address all the issues that are occurring in our community. Crime is one measurement. I would also tell you that as a police manager, I'm looking at police response time, and I can look at the aggregate number and tell you that our calls for service, even though the crime is down, our accident rates are up, those aren't necessarily crime, our calls for service, we're up to about 75,000 calls for service, and it's up from 10 years ago. So, police, people aren't just calling for crimes, they're calling police for help on variety of things, accidents, maybe not law enforcement issue, but we respond to those, welfare checks, whatever that may be, calls for service are up. What I can tell you is that when you, historically, I know when we had the Prop 1, the goal was to bring our staffing to 1.61 per 1,000 residents. And when you look at historically, the Federway Police Department, we've, as a policy group, and the recommendation from me and also from the previous chief is that we want to try to maintain 1.4 officers per 1,000 residents. That for a community like ours, kind of suburban, urbanizing, we have Highway 99, I-5 right through our town, which brings different challenges and elements to our community, we always felt 1.4 was a good number to have, a baseline. So, as a policy decision, we should try to, my recommendation to you as my, as your police chief, is to try to keep that number and be strategic about it. You can't lower the number or increase the number just because crime is up or down for the month. This is for two-year period, so I think you need to be strategic. So, when you reduce overtime budget, it has direct implication to public safety because we can't run the operation the way we want to. As a police chief, I want to make sure the officers who work in the street and our civilian staff have the equipment to do their job. I want to make sure that when they need a pair of boots, that I want to be able to purchase that for them. Or if they need a new taser because it's simply worn out, it's outdated, I want to make sure I have the money in the budget to provide them with good equipment so they can safely and effectively do their job. So, I would tell you that for our staffing, I hope that gives you some framework of, I think, where the staffing needs to be. And I think we need to be really careful about not taking money from the police department budget because it's going to have direct public safety implications. And I'll be willing to answer any more questions that you have. Hopefully, that's a good overview of what I've been saying probably last month or two.
Okay. So, I'm going to go in the order, almost like a game show, to see who's light went on first, please. Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Tran.
You know, thank you so much, chief. And I'm assuming your staff and you spent a considerable amount of time on this email that we got that was shared earlier. And it's certainly something I've read pretty carefully and, you know, before I go any further, I mean, I'm Mr., I tend to try and stay positive as much as I can, and I appreciate the conversation we had, what was it, last week, with our council budget? You know, I know we're entering different periods of time, and I know that a lot more is at stake today than it was two years ago when we passed the last budget. And so, I appreciated what was stated last week and the conversation that we're having today. And I think we're going to have difficult conversations. That's just a fact. And I know that last week, we talked about capping police officers and overtime hours and, you know, I've thought long and hard and I'm still and am contemplating this, and I intend to talk to my colleagues one-on-one just to kind of get their perspective. But where I'm at right now is, we all hear the issues that we're having and the concerns that our constituents are having when it comes to public safety. We hear it in the public comments. We hear it in the letters that Stephanie, our city clerk, has read. We see it on Facebook, we see it just about everywhere, and more importantly, we see it in the briefings that the chief gives us in our emails of what's happened, when. And while I'm still going to be open-minded and kind of listen to arguments of capping, I have to say that at this time, I am rather concerned about doing so because I don't want to have, to put it in a simple way, I don't want to have my name attached to, I'm sorry, statements of saying, I'm sorry, we didn't have the funds to buy our equipment for our police officers so they can be safe out there when they're doing their job, you know? And I have to say that, deputy mayor, I know that, I don't know your family that well, but your son is a police officer. And I, as I was reading this, I was thinking about him and others, and that's, we need to equip them. I don't want to dare come close to making that even a questionable aspect. Having been through, as a council member, having been through a spree of shootings, we want to be in a position where our officers have the resources to combat, for example, the horrific crime that had happened and so we can come, so we can see that case closed so that we can, you know, build confidence within our neighbors, our friends, our families that live here in Federway. So, you know, certainly, I'm, you know, I'm going to be listening, I'm not fully made a decision yet, but at this time, I just, it makes me very nervous to get, you know, have these conversations of, we need to cap this or get into the arena of not equipping our police officers with all the tools and resources that they need, you know? And for me, you know, I know that quite frankly, to be quite blunt to my colleagues, I've been talking about staffing, staffing, staffing without any, where are we going to take it out of and how are we going to replenish those funds? But the reality is, is that we need to, I want to get to the point where we can enhance our police department, you know? I want to build a community-oriented aspect to our police department. I want to see, you know, domestic violence unit, that be strengthened within our police department. I want to, you know, do a better job of combating, you know, theft, auto theft, burglaries, you know? It's something that we're hearing, drug campaign. And, you know, to think that we may not be able to do that and to take away equipment from our police officers and even gun violence awareness, you know, I think just really concerns me. So, I just wanted to put that out there to my colleague that, you know, I'm still going to be listening to arguments and cases being made, but I, police officers, public safety, makes me sick to my stomach when people say I want to move because I don't have confidence in our city of keeping me safe with my family. Just makes me sick. And I don't, I want to be a part of a city that's being sensitive and proactive with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do agree, I think some of our citizens here tonight talked about it. I wholeheartedly think that public safety is our number one priority as a council. But, you know, looking at it, I mean, I think that's why we're saying maintaining our level that we currently have. We're not saying cutting, we're saying to maintain the current level. And, you know, when I think about, I recently did a ride-along with Officer Pahn, and the amount of time that went into the traffic ticket component of his job was huge, it was a lot. And so, it just speaks again to, when we're talking about crime, it's not just violent crimes or this or that, it's how are we defining the word efficiency within our entire city government? And so, what I'm saying is maintaining that level so we can look at that. Because the data that, we need to be data-informed, and the data that the chief just presented us is, in violent crimes or crimes like that, crime's down 17% from last year. That's the data that we're going off of. So, if we maintain it at the same level, and we're not saying capping it at 500,000, we're just saying beyond $500,000, if you can come to council and say this is why we need the additional funds, that's a potential solution for us. So, before I get to a couple of questions, I did want to talk about some of the recommendations that I personally had from the last meeting. And again, I just mentioned a couple. So, maintaining the same level of police officers, police overtime at $500,000. And then also, I wanted to go back to the Performing Arts Center Community Relations position. So, I think the city attorney last time said that this is a mandatory position that we have to have, if I'm correct?
Well, the function's mandatory.
The function's mandatory.
And we don't have anyone to do it without hiring someone to do it.
Okay. So, a recommendation I would have is to decrease that position to a .5 rather than a 1.0, and then using the other .5 for a team coordinator position within John's department. I would also recommend hiring two IT staff pretty much immediately. I think that Thomas has said that, that we need immediate support in that department, in our IT, because without the IT department, our city wouldn't be able to run at all. And so, immediate hiring of two IT staff. And then I also agree with Ms. Holloway's comments about the chief administrative officer. I think that that's an important position that I would hope we can take a look at. And I do agree again with the youth action team. I would love to see that increased to $50,000, so not just the half of what was asked for, but if we can only do 25, then that's, we're moving the needle in the right direction. So, I think that's some of the recommendations that I would advise for my colleagues. And then the last question I had, and I wanted to ask either, I think Yarden may have answered this before or the chief, but how much, how much are we paying for homelessness encampments? Like, taking those down? Because for a second, if we could think back to February 3rd of this year, our top three priorities as a council were revenue streams, economic development, and homelessness. Those were our top three. And I don't see economic development or homelessness addressed or illustrated in our budget if those are our top three priorities.
Well, right now, we pay, I think it's $186,000 per year out of our city budget that addresses homelessness per se. The encampments, actually, we don't, you know, as you heard today, many of the encampments that we take down or that we help people get off their property, it's on private property and that is on the private property owner to take them down. There are some actually gift of public funds issue about us cleaning other people's properties. So, the, where we see actually these encampments pop up on public land, they're dealt with pretty quickly. So, we don't, there is not a line item for public encampments. In fact, when we have public encampments or encampments on public property around, especially around the community center, when we get started for day camp, and I'm sure, I'm looking at John when I say this, those kids go through those trails behind there and we have got to get that out. So, we're very vigilant about getting those, getting those cleared out when they occur. And you may notice that the area directly across the street from the Celebration Park is now really thinned out. That was actually private property. We've been working with those folks for quite some time because that was a, that was area as well. So, in fact, actually, the number one area where, or two areas where we've had continuous sources of homeless encampments, illegal encampments, the first in which the initiative was developed, which is across north, across 304th, north of 304th, across from Steel Lake, that is about a six-acre site, and there were about 50 people living back there, but those parcels are owned by a private family. And so, we were actually working with the Mirror and we went in communication with the police department and the landowner because we went in and trespassed individuals off that. But we don't pay to, it's the second time they're going to have to do that. So, anyway, that, and then the other area that was probably the number one area that we cleaned last year was across the street from Joe's Deli on 336th, and there were about four acres back there in which we had, you know, dozens of campers, encampments, hundreds of shopping carts, they had their own, you know, hundreds of stolen bicycles and stolen televisions and makeshift structures, and all of that has been taken away. And we worked, that was paid for by the private property owner. But I went back there with about 20 people from the city, half police, half code enforcement, and we took, I still actually have all the pictures from that, and it was just absolutely incredible. So, that answer is, most of that is private.
Okay. I wasn't saying to advocate to increase that at all.
Right.
I'm saying just, that just speaks to the preventative measures that we have to take as a city.
Right. Yeah, there is no line item for that because it's, it's just not happening. Councilmember Kopeck.
Just wanted to, Councilmember Tran, appreciate you indulging me just for a second here. I wanted to just make one clarification to Councilmember Johnson and to the rest of the community. The reason that the $25,000 number was asked for from the Federway Youth Action Team was because there's already $5,000 being recommended by the Human Services Commission. So, that 5,000 plus the 25,000 would get the full $30,000 if the council was to approve that.
But they still, they asked for 50,000. So, I just want to make that.
No, and exactly right. And I would certainly like to be able to fund them at the full amount, but I think priorities are what they are. I just want to make sure that the full 30, that they're asking for programmatic funding is what we're asking for, not less than that.
Councilmember Johnson, can you indulge me for a minute? Can you run through your list again? There was something I was going to provide, information I didn't provide. Not in length, but just in general topic.
Yeah, so I had one, the Performing Arts Center Community Liaison position.
Yeah.
Was that it?
No, we'll keep going.
Team coordinator, IT staff, chief administrative officer, and then it was the $50,000 for youth action team.
Oh, the municipal court. That's right. So, I think we've got to be really, regarding the municipal court, I received a memorandum from Judge Larson last week. So, I was a little surprised to see that because we are doing this, that request is for an additional $20,000 per year for that position. And I, I can't think of anything more corrosive to morale in the city than to cherry pick departments. I think we've got, it's your guys' decision, but I think if you cherry pick and make a winner here and a winner there and don't address uniformly, I think you're going to have a serious morale problem. But anyway, that's just, that's just me. And I, actually, that dollar figure was astronomical when I took a look at a $20,000 increase per year for one employee. I can't recommend that. Go ahead. Okay, okay. Councilmember DuKlo.
Oh, I just wanted to thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Tran first.
No, you go ahead.
I just want to thank you very much for having, I walked my dog over at Celebration Park this morning. Celebration Park this morning, and the trails were absolutely clear of everything. And it's a nice walk, and we enjoyed ourselves. So thank you, and thank the staff for cleaning up over there.
Well, you're welcome, and I, you know, we all drive through there, and I kept seeing the shopping carts around there, the telltale signs, and the tents in there. You had to, yeah, and then that was directly, John and I spoke every time I drove by and I noticed that, we need to address that. This is a situation, I was in Oakland today. I was actually driving around, you know, and I was driving, I was in, I was in north central California on a business recruitment trip for the city, and I met with quite a number of businesses, just, I flew down yesterday and came back today. And I had to, I was, being in Oakland, I was astonished at the amount of debris, and garbage, and graffiti, and, and what happens. And then I, when we were at the, when Tim and I were at the airport, saw all of the news about these encampments and these things where people, it's just astounding. And we really, we're, we just need to, this is the kind of thing that can get on, while we think we have an issue right now, in one need only drive up a few miles north to Seattle to see what happens when this problem gets away from you. And we've got to be very vigilant about it. But I do, also, to completely answer Councilmember Johnson's question, we're very careful about the budget as well. And I think that, you know, while we've got people that are doing their normal work, a lot of that, a lot of that pickup stuff was done, you know, fairly early on, when we launched the initiative, almost two years ago now, it was about March, April, May of 2016. And so, we just, when, when we get one that's on public property, we're pretty quick to address it. Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I was the one who actually brought up the police issue. This is, I know this is a touchy subject. But the reason I brought it up is not because I don't think the public safety is priority number one. I said that more than once. What I was talking about is, from the business perspective, the question that I asked this council, and Chief Wong, is that, you know, when you run in a business, and your workload is down by 17% for the first six months of 2018, and now the chief mentioned that in 2017, the crime rate actually go down by 10%. So in two years, the crime rate keep going down. But the question, the police department one is, to be able to maintain the level of officers. That portion, I don't understand from the business perspective. Secondly, and I said this, this at the last meeting, if I am a business owner, if I'm running a company, if I'm the CEO of the company, knowing that each and every month, every year for the last five years, that my company have to spend almost a million dollars in overtime, I would have to meet with my management team and say, hey, we have got to do something about this, to control this overtime. That's the points I want to make. Not because I don't value our police department. Okay, so I make, I want to make that very clear. We're not talking about not giving the police department the money to buy the equipments. I never said that, and I don't, I did not hear any of us here saying that. We strictly look at the FTEs and the overtime amount. Any one of us want the best for ourselves, for our family, right? If we all treat the city budget just like our own, then before we buy, we go out and buy something, we would have to look at our finances to see if we are actually able to afford it. If my family need a new car, of course I want a Lexus, of course I want a Tesla, that's so cool. But then I have to look at my financial situation and say, you know what, yeah, that Lexus is so good, you know, parked on my driveway, but can I afford it? If I can't, then I have to settle for some, for something less. The same way we run the city. Of course I want our police department to be the best, and have everything that they needed to do their job. But again, question is, can I afford it? Can the city afford it? We already spent 53% of our general fund to one single department. And that is not enough. So when enough is enough? I respect the work that they do, and I'm grateful for the work that they do. They deserve to come home safe after their workship ended, just like any one of us. But again, where's the money came from? We don't have enough, I keep hearing people talking that we don't have enough money to pay certain people at a certain department, staff are leaving. But we do have money to fund one single entity of the city. That is my issue. So again, I think with the crime rate going down, two consecutive years, I think, in my opinion, and I'm glad that I don't run that department, because I have no skill to run that department, but I truly believe that they can work together within that department to control the overtime costs. I truly believe that. They can be more efficient. So, having said that, I would like to offer the following amendments to the budget. Some of these are very similar or identical to, you know, some of the council members here. But I'm going to go ahead and, and read it out loud anyway, so that they can capture it. Number one, I would like to add one FTE to the IT unit. I would like to have 25,000 for lean training and implementation. I would like to have 25,000 for the police department for additional mental health and cultural sensitivity training.
How much?
I would like to put aside 100,000 for services related to homelessness, pending recommendation from the mayor's homelessness task force. So we just put the money aside, and when that task force came back with the recommendation, and if, if this item in there needed the money, then that money will be used for that purpose. I would like to support Councilmember Johnson, the $50,000 for Federal Way Youth Action Team. I also asked for $3,500 for annual rally-to-vote event. And, I don't know how to face this, but, but I'm going to try to explain the best I can. I would like us to put aside money somehow, so that we can match the pay raises for all city employees when we negotiated with one entity. So for example, if the mayor negotiated with the police union, for example, for 3% increase, if that is the final outcome, then I would like the city to match that pay increase for all employees, union or non-union. And the reason I said that is because I don't want the employee in, in the city, that, the one that don't get the higher pay raises feel like they are second-class workers in the city. We need to treat everybody the same. Every service that they provide to us, regardless they carry the gun, or they, they cut the grass, or making coffee, we value them the same. So if we are going to give one entity a pay increase, X number of percentage, then the rest of the city employees should get that pay raise. So, how are we going to fund this? We are going to fund this by subtracting the one FTE for the PAC. And I know there was the, a proposal from Jesse that reduced that by .5, and I'm, I'm okay with that. So .5 reduction on the PAC position. We keep the police allotment at 160 total. However, they want to deviate that, you know, how many police officers, how many office support, that is, you know, within his authority to, to do that. But we stay at 160 FTEs for a police department. And I also want to cap the police overtime at $500,000 a year. If they needed more, they can always come back to this council and ask. Thank you.
All right. Chief, I think there may be, with regard, I think there may be some understanding about the overtime, and about whether this is just us going over and needing overtime versus the structural aspect of overtime. Can you talk about overtime?
Sure. I'd like to actually address multitude of issues that were brought up.
Would you?
If I could, please. Our population is going to increase in 19 and 2020. Our calls for service for police demand is going to increase, just like all the other departments. Demands are going to increase. Going into the 19 and 20 budget, we're not raising, we're not asking for one single dollar more than what we have in the 2018 budget. We're going to carry same number of officers into 2019, 134. Now, we're going to be adding three officer positions, jail transport officers, 2020, if we leave score. But those officers aren't going to be working the street, they're not going to be dispatched to call. So we're going to be doing court security and moving prisoners. Reducing to 160 FTEs, we've already, during the Great Recession, Lord showed that we are really understaffed in terms of the civilian staff. What this means, if we're capped at 160, we're going to reduce three officer positions, and we're going to go down to 131 officers. And that will mean we're going to be at 1.34 officers per thousand residents. I don't know, I've made it clear multiple times, our workload is not going down. Our response time is going up. And the biggest complaint that we get from our citizens on a regular basis, why did it take so long to get to this call? Why aren't you able to respond quicker? More officers on the BPA trail, neighborhood, traffic enforcement, it's endless. And this is where the management team, we work very hard with our team to address. And regarding the overtime, through September, we've spent $655,000. That is a reduction of 20, over 20% from the previous year overtime. And why is that? We, we're not experiencing the violent crime that we did in 2016 and 17. A lot of the overtime expense is not something you can predict. I cannot tell you that there isn't going to be a domestic violence case tonight, and there's going to be a violent case. It's hard to quantify and measure. But when we have violent crimes such as that, we're going to, the community expectation and the policy group expectation is, we work hard to solve that case as quickly as possible, restore that sense of safety. I've said it last meeting, $500,000 for an agency our size is not sufficient. We have labor contracts, we have mandatory overtime situations, that just not, it's not reasonable. We're just not going to make it. And we're not asking to buy Lexuses. I mean, we buy Fords. We buy the basic stuff. One of the things, I'll tell you what, what we did this year, crimereports.com, for example, we were paying $2,000 a year. And our staff, because they have, let's look for ways to save money. When crimesreports.com increased our contract to $6,000, we said, hey, we're just not going to renew the contract. So we've been a few months without it, but next month or two, we're going to go to Lexus-Nexus program that, it doesn't cost us any money. And right now, the technicians are working, IT department, and their engineers are working to get that connectivity done. We think we'll get it done in November. So the steps that we're taking, we're just trying to save $6,000, because our budget's tight. That $6,000 now can be used for something else. So hopefully, that'll address some of the concerns, and you can look at any municipality, the police department's going to have the biggest budget. Because the public expectation is, they want safety. So it's no accident that the police department budget is going to be the largest budget in any municipal department. So hopefully, that answers some of your questions. And yes, if you, if you cap that overtime, we're going to try to save money in other places. That will mean that certain operations that we used to do, that we think that makes a positive impact on our community safety, we're going to have to pull back. The commanders aren't going to have the autonomy to spend some of that funding for some of our operations. That may mean that we may not buy certain equipment for officers for a while, if we can get by with it. I'll be honest with you, as a police chief, I want them to have the good equipment on the street, best equipment, so that they can be safe out there. And that would be my request. But if you were to cut money within the police department budget, I would just tell you to lower the FTEs. I would prefer to give good equipment and the tools for the officers who are here, working now. If you tell me to do your policing with 130 officers, 120, the leadership team will do it. I'm just going to be honest with you, and tell you, we're just not going to be as effective addressing the community needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmore?
So, I'm going to ask you to repeat this again. If we were to cap it at 500,000, which is what you've been hearing, conversation, specifically, and I know that you stated this in your email, what would, what would be affected, and what couple of things would be affected by that?
Couple of things. If you have, if you have the money set aside for me to get the additional funds, I will probably come to you in August and ask for additional funds, because we will be over budget. If council priority is, stay within that 500,000, I will be looking through with my management team, we will be cutting things out.
Like what?
Equipment. Let's say an officer needs a taser, does it really need to be replaced or not? We're going to go another year with it. Maybe it's going to come down to vehicles. Can we, can we push this vehicle for another year? And I'll be honest with you, when you're responding priority calls, maybe involved in a pursuit, you want to have good vehicles. You do not want your staff getting hurt, because we're driving substandard cars. That's just an example. I don't want to give substandard equipment to officers on the street. But when you're talking about $300,000, $400,000 in a budget, that's what it's going to result to. There isn't, our biggest jail budget's going to be salary and benefit costs, jail costs, dispatch costs. A small portion of our budget is discretionary. And that comes down to just buying equipment for our officers, footwear, uniform, I want our officers to look good. If they got a hole in their jumpsuit, in their kneepad, and they say, we need another, I need another jumpsuit, I don't want to tell an officer, no, you're going to wear that a little longer. I want our officers to look good. I don't want them to feel good. It impacts their morale.
Chief, talk to me about the gun violence reduction emphasis patrol. How would that, how would that patrol be affected by this cap, if it was to come in place?
If overtime is more, more important than, in doing gun violence emphasis patrol, for example, we would, the commanders would just stop scheduling those based on statistical information from our crime analysts. Hey, we predict, or this is an area that we need to put little extra emphasis patrol or what have you, we'd probably cut back on those kind of things.
Well, that, that actually was started as a result of, we had a number of shootings in the northern part of town, prior to those shootings, and around the 188th area, and that with, we're working with the chief and working with his leadership team, we had extra patrols. Then we had the multiple homicides, three homicides that occurred within 36 hours two years ago. And then we, we actually were very proactive in the southwest section of town. So there are different areas where, where we have gang activity, where we have criminal activity, what we'll do is, we'll have that emphasis patrol in that area.
Okay, that, that actually- That actually brings a little bit more clarity.
Well, yeah, because we, there were a number of apartment complexes around the 188th area that are just to the east of, that are just to east, 288, 288, what did I say? Oh, sorry. 288, 288, the Pacific Highway, just one block east of there, there's a whole bunch of apartments. And we had, a few years ago, we had, there was a couple homicides in that area, a lot of gun violence. If you keep going down the road, there's another location where we have, where we're actually installing new cameras there, but that's a perennial hotspot that we have to be very careful of, that will spark. And then we actually had, actually, it was a young Marine that was killed, that was murdered right, you know, just actually home for the weekend, and that was, I think he was a young, early twenties, and he was murdered and essentially just tried to get out to his car. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, just because I really wanna get a better clarity on this, and better, a clearer understanding, I'll meet with you after this as well, but I just want there to be a clear expectation that if you were to cap this, here's the negative consequences that we're gonna potentially see. So that, so what this means is you guys are pretty much just extremely present in those hotspots.
So, that's one area. I wanna add a little bit more context, because I think this will really help why, where the overtime goes. One of the things is, for example, just if somebody calls in sick at the last minute, we have minimum staffing requirements. So that's probably one of the biggest areas, when somebody just calls in sick, they're not healthy, they can't come to work. Other is, let's say, we have a significant arrest middle of the night. If there's a booking into jail, none of the officers involved are going home until all their case report is done. So if it happens towards the end of the shift, they gotta do their reports before they go home. When we have court hearings at the municipal court, or superior court trial cases, officers who work nights, who are not on their regular nine-to-five schedule, or detectives sometimes on their off days, they're on overtime, waiting to testify, or they're at the court. So those are things that we have no control over. Light duty, we have officers on light duty assignments, sometimes they get hurt while they're working. So we put them on light duty assignments. Sometimes we have as many as six officers that are injured and can't work the street until they get clearance from the doctor. That directly impacts overtime expenditure. We already talked about violent crimes, homicide investigations. If we have fatal collisions, we average between three to five fatal collisions. All those are, you know, major accident investigation team members that come out and work those cases, those are expenses. We're part of a regional SWAT team, 50, 60 SWAT regional callouts a year. We have six members on the team. Every time the team is activated, these officers are generally on overtime expense. Bomb disposal unit, they're called out, they're on overtime. And I've talked about the labor issue. So there's a lot of things that are just built in, that it's gonna cost overtime funds to operate, and agency our size of almost $100,000, $500,000 is just not reasonable. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to attain it.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. First of all, before I start into my notes, I'd like to thank all of the council members and the mayor for what you're doing, because this isn't an easy job. And as we all put different eyes on the budget, and we all have different ideas, and it's, I'm glad that everyone feels comfortable enough to talk about their ideas, because as you've heard teachers say, you know, no question is a dumb question, right? And no idea is a dumb question. It's, everything that's been asked and spoken about is something that is important to that council member, and probably important to other council members, too. So I really appreciate everyone up here who has done their homework and spent hours studying this budget, because it is complex. It is what is going, what we're going to be using for the next two years, and when we pass it, we need to be happy with it. So, so saying that, I have a couple questions, well, several questions. So I, today, one of the questions I have is, what percent of the budget in 19 and 20 is to pay off debt? And you don't have to answer this tonight. And in '21 and '22, what percent of the budget will be to pay back debt? Because we'll have debt that we need to be paying back in '21 and '22, that's, that we don't have right now, that we don't have to pay back right now. And are we saving, does this budget have a place to save money to pay back some of that debt? Or are we going to be looking at other sources to pay back the debt?
For the current debt that we have, like even say, the conversation that we'll be having about Section 108, even though we're planning to use the allocation from hard for it, but as a prudent way, if that doesn't happen, based on this budget in 19 and 20, we have planned to be able to pay that. Even though in the budget, we're expecting money, we're expected to use Section 108, but should they say, no, you can't do that, based on the budget that the mayor is putting forth, there's an accommodation to pay out of the debt fund and pay their loan? Yes, would that reduce our available fund, but the accommodation is there as is now.
So I'd like to talk about homelessness. In our, last week, Jeff Watson was able to send us the recommendations that the Human Services Commission has recommended for funding for the next two years. And there's quite a bit of money in, well, in my opinion, there's a bit more money in there to provide shelter for our homeless folks than I've seen in the past, but I'm not sure that it's enough, because we know one of the ways out of homelessness is to provide shelter. And as a city, we don't run shelters like the City of Seattle does, or the City of Tacoma does. We have nonprofit groups run shelters. And as we increase the size of Federal Way and we become one of the biggest cities in the state of Washington, we may need to, in the near future, change that and be like Tacoma and Seattle, and provide some shelters that the city of Federal Way provides. And it's something I think we need to start looking at as to how we're gonna handle the issue of homelessness in the next five to 10 years, because I don't see it getting better. I see it getting worse. When we clean out a homeless camp, and this should be no surprise to the mayor, it's not something I've thought was a good way to handle the issue, because the folks just move to another area, and another area, and then they're rotating between, back and forth between these areas. And in August, apparently, at one of the meetings that I was at, I asked how much money we're spending on cleaning out the homeless camps. And the response came last week from Yarden, and it isn't something that the staff is able to track, because of all the different folks that are involved in cleaning out homeless camps, that the city cleans out. And I would be interested in finding out exactly what, or as close as possible, it takes to clean out a homeless camp. Because if we have that number, then we can better plan in the future for what our responsibility will be to clean out these camps. But I do think that, as a city, we need to set aside, I agree with Hong, that we need to set aside some money for the recommendations that the homeless task force may come up with. It's unfortunate that the report isn't due till end of December, and I know that we have asked in the past to get, if they needed some funding, if they would ask us before November, and I don't know, maybe they don't need any funding, maybe what they're working on, the recommendations, the community is going to be stepping up and funding it. I don't know. If we were to cap the police overtime, I would want $500,000 put aside, so that there is money available in August, when the police chief would request more. I would like, in the mayor's budget, to put aside money for the chief administrative officer. But I am very, very concerned that we do have debt as a city. We may be going into a recession nationwide, and I'm concerned with how, as a city, we're gonna be able to face that recession and provide the services that we need to provide to our folks, to our citizens. So that's what I have to say. But I do appreciate all, everyone's thoughts and the discussions we're having, because this is really, truly a difficult time.
I think, just to, if I may, talking about capping the police overtime, I think the overtime went up a couple of years ago, like Mayor Farrell said. As part of set aside, whatever it is you cap the overtime, I hope you also set aside some fund to respond to emergency. So should there be an incident, the overtime that the chief is talking about, that is regular overtime. Should there be a couple of homicide, that the citizen come to you and start screaming, you need to have fund available to quickly authorize him, do whatever it is that you need to do, to get this under wrap? So whatever cap you do, I hope you set fund aside to respond to that kind of emergency as well.
That's why I said $500,000, because if he, if overtime now is at 500,000, that's why I agree with you. I think that's what we would need to do. We would be not doing our job to support the police department if we didn't do that.
I think that this is substantial misnomer about overtime. I think we've gone through that this isn't, that we're paying people to work extra hours just 'cause, or that they can make, that they're, you know, that they can make a little bit more money. When they're under subpoena by a court, they're required to be there, and we are required by contract to pay them overtime. So it's like, we just don't know exactly how it's coming in. This is not a situation in which, that we're sort of losing track of our overtime hours, and we need to, quote, manage it. These are, these are emergency situations, either you've got either court, or you've got somebody who's sick, or you've got a homicide. And I could tell you, as the mayor, when you've got a, when you've got a dead body of a citizen of Federal Way on the ground, we're gonna work as long as it takes, those officers, as long as it takes, for as many hours as possible, to figure out who did it. And I've seen that happen here in the city of Federal Way, in which literally, on PAC Highway, in midday, you've got a young teenage boy on the ground who was murdered in broad daylight, and it was, and all these people driving by, and you've got every officer that you need to respond, and they're gonna be there and do everything they need to do. But if you randomly and just arbitrarily cap a number, I think you're sending a message to the police department, you don't trust them, and you also don't understand the mechanism by which you're actually allocating these funds. And I could tell you right now, for the chief administrative officer, as the elected mayor of the city of Federal Way, I make decisions about hiring and firing. You'd be much better off allocating that 200 or $200,000-plus salary to a chief administrative officer, where you could actually use it, because I'm not going to hire that person. The people of this community elected me to run the city for four years. I'm not gonna hire somebody and sit in my office and go to ribbon cuttings all day long, and go to regional meetings and let somebody else run the city. We have a world-renowned and nationally-recognized finance director, professional staff directors. My job is to run the city, and we are not going to hire, I will not hire, a chief administrative officer. It's a waste of money. We have professional directors that run the, that run their individual departments, and the people of this community elected me to run the city, and that's what I'm doing. And I presented a budget that is balanced, and that doesn't arbitrarily limit the amount of officers and protection that this community is gonna receive. And I'm gonna tell you right now, and I'm gonna tell you right now, that, you know, Councilmember Tran, you have proposed hundreds of thousands of dollars, or at least almost $200,000, maybe $300,000, with no real plan on how you're gonna pay for any of this. You have, you proposed $25,000 for lean, when not one person in, not one of the directors had proposed that. You proposed $25,000 in mental health treatment, or mental health recommendations to the police department. The police department isn't asking for this, and they already receive it. So you're pretty quick to just throw $50,000 away there, another $25,000 away in regard to the Federal Way Youth Action Team, and $3,500, $3,500 for a party, so people should do what they already should require, be required to do, which is vote. Every person, every registered voter in this community gets a ballot. If they don't vote, that's on them, but you don't need a $3,500 party to tell people to vote. Councilmember DuKlo?
Well, I was just gonna agree with your statements along there. We've been doing this a long time. We happen to know what we're doing, and we happen to know about our employees, and how good they work, and how often they do things on their own, without billing for it, or without charging the city for these things. And I, you know, this is my third term. I'm in my 11th year on this council, and I've been through this before, and I know the work that these people do here. They're hardworking, they earn what they get, actually, they probably do more, and they're underpaid for a lot of the stuff that they do. And I think the budget that we have here is a very tight, tight budget. I have done budgeting for 16 years at the multi-service center, and before that, at another agency up in Seattle for five years, and before that, for another agency in Illinois, where I ran a department, a foster care department, and I turned it into a cash cow for the agency. I grew up in business families, so I treated all nonprofits just like a business, because they are. The only difference between a nonprofit and a for-profit is you can't pay it out to shareholders. And I think, I'm very familiar with budgets, I'm familiar with tight situations, as well as flush ones, and when you have flush ones, you put money aside for the tight times. And I think we're working on that right now. I think the budget that we've talked about is very fair and equitable to all the departments. Thank you.
All right. We've got Councilmember Sephardosson, Councilmember Moore, Deputy Mayor Honda, and Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Sephardosson, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. In terms of the police and overtime, I appreciate the 17% decrease in crime, and to me, that's, and to all of us, that is a plus, it's a positive, it's something great. It's not something that we should use to say, okay, we don't need additional services, or we don't need the overtime. It's just to say, we're doing phenomenal, and hopefully, it stays even below the 17%. And so I don't think that's a measure to say, we're doing well, therefore, we don't need the overtime or anything. I just believe it shows that we're doing something good, but we need to continue doing whatever it is, because like you said, it's unpredictable. Right now, while we're here, crime could happen, and we have no way of controlling how things are done within the police department. So I appreciate your proposal, and hopefully, we can do the best, or support your request at the level, because it's needed. And if it's not spent or used, then, you know, like we said before, it just, you know, it's not going away, in terms of how that money is allocated or reallocated. There's got, there'll be funds. So just because it's there doesn't mean it's gonna be used frivolously, but of course, it's good to have it, to make sure that we don't need it, and we're not scrambling to support our police department. The homeless task force, I really believe, yeah, I agree. I don't know how, what amount they're gonna come back with for, to support, or to do whatever is necessary for the task force, but yes, there's money that needs to be put, because if they are requesting any kind of funding, and we don't have it, or we haven't planned for it, then what was the point of having a task force? And thank you for accepting my request for the Affordable Housing Task Force, the Regional Task Force. One thing, you know, housing is really a continuum, and if you don't take care of people who need affordable housing, they're the ones who are gonna be homeless tomorrow. And so the struggle's gonna be real, it's gonna continue. So... So our priority is addressing homelessness, one of the priorities. It's great to have the task force. It's also great to address and look at what it is that we're doing for people who need the affordable housing. So I think we're on the right track. We are addressing it, we're talking about it, and hopefully there's money to really do what we are, what we've set out to do for our residents, for our population, and for the people who are experiencing homelessness. I do like Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Honda's suggestion about a homeless shelter, because we don't have one in our city. I don't know if it's a city that needs to run it, but definitely having some kind of a partnership where we have the shelter here would be a great idea. But right now, I don't know if that's, you know, if that comes from the task force, then I think it's something to look into and see how we can support. So thank you very much for your time.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much. Where to start? I, I would like to second some of the ideas that I'm, I'm hearing, and I'd like to add some comments. Okay, I actually would like you to eliminate, well, this looks a little different. Scroll it up if you can, please. And I would like to remove my Financial Transparency Dashboard Proposal. In talking with your IT manager, Mr. Mayor, and I know that he's working with me on this, and certainly I'll connect with you, so you know what's happening, he's your staff member, not mine. But this kind of goes along with why I'm supporting the, the one or two IT staff members to this, that's what I would second. Probably two staff members, I think there's a strong need for that in our IT. But I would like to, to highly, strongly, and hopefully we can get enough councilmembers to support this idea, to give direction to have one of the IT staff members develop a dashboard system. And in talking with Thomas, he said that something like that is very much feasible using one of the programs, which I'll be happy to talk about that at the next council meeting, more about that, so that can be more education on that. So I think giving the power to the public to understand their financial dashboard through an interactive system, having given that to, to a staff member at IT to build that, I think would be my proposal for that. I think it, it's really interesting, because I know we're kind of getting hung up on this overtime thing, and, and, you know, just like I said, I'm looking forward to, to more conversations one-on-one. But I have to say that, and this kind of goes back to this whole budget discussion. Honestly, I'm enjoying this budget discussion. I don't think we've never had this type of discussion in a long, long time. That's just my personal opinion. And I think it's perfectly healthy that we're all coming up with these ideas. For the last several months, couple of months, we've heard our amazing directors give their proposals, and, you know, and the mayor's had a, a great opportunity to work with them to come up with this budget. Now it's our turn to dissect, to ask questions, to put proposals on the table. We don't have the staff members to say, "Where do we take this from and whatnot?" You know, it's the mayor that has the staff to look at the budget and ask those questions to. So I think it is perfectly healthy that Councilmember Tran came up with those concepts, and quite frankly, for three years, I've been talking about how we need to have a quality lean management program here throughout the whole City of Federal Way, because I think that's a good thing, because at the end of the day, it translates to saving money for taxpayers. And I think that's a really important thing. So I think there's a lot of good ideas that are being put on the table, and I, I appreciate it. I appreciate what Deputy Mayor said, that if we were to cap it, which I'm just not sure if I would favor this at all, but we better have a mechanism that quickly allows the mayor to authorize his chief to deploy services, that's additional resources that's needed to take care of issues. Because like the mayor said, myself, Councilmember Safa Dawson, our deputy mayor, and I believe yourself, Councilmember Copain, and Dini, we've all been through a tragic shooting in this community. And it hit us real hard. I mean, I still remember checking my emails at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning of hearing the horrible news. And I think the mayor is right on. I think some of this is out of our control. And so, like I said, there's, this is a great opportunity for us to hear good ideas and other ideas, and it's our job to vet it. And I sure hope the mayor will come back to the council with, "How can we work this into the budget?" Because these are some of the desires that we have for a reason. So we all have to kind of work together to come up, come up with an agreement. And so, and, but I, I think, you know, you know, in terms of the, the overtime cap, I, they were able to, all of our officers were able, the whole reason, what I'm trying to say to my colleagues, is the whole reason why we've gone 17% down is, is because our officers have been, yep, using some overtime to work towards that, if, if that makes any sense. You know? And so I think our officers are doing a phenomenal job, staying within our allotment, and because they have resources, including overtime, that's part of the reason why we've driven down the crime numbers to 17%. Now, if that hadn't been there, I'm almost convinced, and I'm beginning to be a lot more convinced, that, that 17% would sure look like a different number. And so, you know, I think that's something to be put on the table for us to think about as we're trying to make this decision, if that is it. But, you know, I, I appreciate the chief's candor in his response. And again, it just, I have major concerns of not equipping, and I'm not talking about equipment, but not giving the resources, whatever it may be, to our officers to do their job. I think it's, it's really, it would be a travesty i, i, if, if they didn't get those tools. And not only that, but, Mal, yeah. So with that, I'll end my report. My comment, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. I do want to make it perfectly clear that if the overtime is capped, that we have to have the money available. I, I just, that has to be available.
So we're not saving any money?
Right.
Right. We're just putting a mechanism to micromanage?
It is important that council feels comfortable enough to talk about their ideas also. But I had asked John Hutton some questions last night, and he responded, and one of my questions was, "Last week, we heard about the increased labor costs from the state." And I asked if those increased costs were noted in this budget, and he said, "No, because it came to them so late." What I'd like to know is, how can we address those in this budget, or is that not something we should do?
I'll, I'll address that. I had a telephone conference, I had a meeting with the Public Works Director, John Hutton, Yarden, and Steve Eichert, and also, I think Brian was a part of that, and also Ryan Cole. And we had 250,000 that we have for contracted services with, you know, for the trash pickup, litter pickup, and also making sure that the right-of-ways are cleared. And we also have 50,000 in setaside budgets for the Parks Department. There is no additional money in the budget. And so we're going to make what we've got, 250,000 in the Public Works budget. The decision on my part is to operate within our budget for those amounts, and likely, I, I, actually, I gave the direction to EJ to include those, what would likely be three positions in Public Works to address litter pickup and, and mowing. And then with Parks, we've got some contracts that are going to expire. We cannot go from 250,000 to 600,000 simply because of an arbitrary act by LNI. We will live within our budget. So the budget will not change. Not from, not from my, not from my initiation. If you, if, if you want to pay 600,000, I guess we, we would have that discussion. But I, I can't be in favor of contracting out for, you know, paying somebody 50 an hour to mow, mow grass. We're not going to do that, not from my point of view. So we're going to live within our budget, and then we're going to do everything we can to make sure that the standard of service does not drop. We'll do everything we can, but we're going to stay within our budget.
So I, and I, I agree with that, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, yeah.
But what did you just say, because I'm a little confused, that with this 250,000 for contracted services, you would hire staff?
We're going to have to.
Okay.
We'll have to.
Well, that was what I was going to ask next.
That's it.
If it would be cheaper to hire staff, our own staff?
Yes. That, I, I have directed, last, we have, was it, what day was it, EJ? Was it Thursday or Friday?
So we talked, we talked on Thursday. We're still looking at the hiring staff and trying to come up with a game plan for the mayor that stays within that budget. It hasn't been that long time-wise. It takes some, some time to pull together these numbers. So we're working with HR and finance and everyone to try and figure out what we can get for 250.
Well, and my direction is, that's what's going to happen. We're, we're going to take that 250,000, we're going to make it work. That's what we have allocated. Same thing for Parks. And if, and one of the things I, I made sure that was abundantly clear in that meeting is, the number-one goal of city government, separate and apart from public safety, the reason why we have the number-one allocation is, the number-one goal of any government at any level is the protection of its citizens. I think pretty closely after that is to make sure there's not garbage in the streets, and to make sure that, you know, actually mowing some of these side roads and, and rights of way are to make sure that they're not obscured, and that they don't present a safety hazard for fire. And so we will, if, if, if it's going to take reallocation of the workforce in Public Works and Parks, that's what's going to happen.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
But now I have an idea.
Yeah.
And sometimes you say, "I have good ideas."
You do.
So I have, for, for years, I've been impressed with the Park Pals at the dog park. They love that park, and they take care of it, and when they need help from our staff, they, the staff know exactly what they need and when they need it. But we have, I, I don't know how many parks we have, I could look it up. Could we have, make an effort to form a Park Pal organization for every, as many parks as we can, and have neighborhoods? Perhaps do some of the work at the parks?
It's a good que, um, can we?
Would that, labor-wise, is that?
Well, that's a good question. Yeah, legally.
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes, the city can accept volunteers.
Okay. So, and John, and I think that's more of a Parks as opposed to Public Works. Public Works is probably a little more industrial, by the rights of way, and then litter pickup. One of the things I, I was talking to EJ, and I, this can be tough for EJ, I, you know, I think, and I think it's, it's, you know, the direction I have given him is a pretty, is a tough one for him to absorb. But I think, you know, we obviously have to live within our budget. Parks is, is different because of the, just the different services that are offered. And I think that we can work with John to, I think that's a great idea. That's not a good idea, that's a great idea.
Awesome.
To, you know, to try to engage the public, sort of adopt-your-park kind of concept, which is really what you're talking about.
And adopt your street.
Yeah.
And keep it clean.
Yeah.
You know, we have, the school district requires the freshmen and sophomores to do community service, and whereas I don't want kids out on the street picking up trash and that kind of stuff, accompanied by an adult. There are ways we can do this, and if we're going into a recession and we really need to look at some different ways to get things done, our community will respond. And my last question is, every two years or so, the Human Services Commission does their funding with the CBG monies and some other monies. Did the Youth Action Team go through that process, and that, and I, and were, did they have an application in for 50,000, or what happened with that?
Jeff? Jeff, can you please, can you hear that? The question was asked, Jeff, can you please, Jeff Watson, our Human Services Coordinator, Manager, would you please, the question posed by the deputy mayor is whether the Federal Way Youth Action Team approached the, or applied through the Human Services Commission for funding for this process?
Yes, they did. And they were, I don't remember the exact number that Human Services Commission recommended for funding as a part of the Human Services General Fund, but they did recommend funding for the Federal Way Youth Action Team.
5,000?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah.
So I, I needed to know that, if they had applied and gone through that process, because I think it's important that we fund the groups that are asking for money, but, you know, very rarely does a group get 100% of what they're asking for. It just isn't possible. We have so many organizations that do really good things that are asking for money, that it's impossible to fund them at 100%.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to Councilmember Moore's point, I think it, this has been an interesting process, but I think it's been good, because this is what democracy looks like, is taking into consideration community needs, organizational capabilities, ideas, and, and putting it all on the table, so that we're trying to figure this out as a unit. So I appreciate all my colleagues this afternoon, and the last few budget meetings we've had. And also, Mayor, I think that, you know, you brought up some good points around the chief administrative officer, so I definitely wanted to point that out, as far as what that position entails and the cost of that position. So we'll definitely reconsider that one. But I did want to heart back again on the, as far as the, the police budget, and I think that the email that you sent, Chief, the other day, you talked about, several years ago, the council approved the increase to 767,000 for budget overtime, for police overtime. So this would be decreasing by 267,000 essentially. Correct. Yeah. And so you did mention that you would try to absorb this, so you can continue that overtime, so you would decrease equipment, reduce training, and other resources for the, for the officers, rather than decreasing the overtime? So can you speak to that a little bit? Are you saying that regardless, if we cap it at 500K, it's not going to actually be capped, or?
What I'm telling you is, there's no more money. As a professional law enforcement executive, we cannot address all the overtime needs, all the things I listed, going to court, and people calling in sick. 500,000 simply just won't be enough money. So if I am held to that number, then I got to, there's only a small percentage of money that's left over that I got to manage, because I can't, controlled jail cost, it's fixed, dispatch cost is fixed, salary and benefit is fixed. There's a small percentage of money in that entire budget. I'm going to have to cut it somewhere. And that's going to be training for officers, equipment, those kind of things. And as a police executive, I don't want to tell my management team that we're going to cut back on uniform, shoes, purchasing radios, those things that could make a difference in officer safety on the field. I don't want to do that. So what I'm telling you is, if you're going to cut PD budget, we're going to have to reduce officer numbers, because I want to serve the officers who are here, working every day.
Right. Okay. So that, that does answer my question. So it's not, it's not decreasing the police overtime specifically, it's decreasing the police budget. So there's no way for us to decrease overtime specifically?
What I would, what I would like is a budget for the police department, and then I'm held accountable to the entire budget, like all the other departments.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, obviously, I'm very new to this council, and I have to admit that I need to learn quite a bit how the city operates. So to help me understand that, I'm going to ask the directors, any of you, if you want to answer my questions. So when your staff are on leave, on vacation, or call out sick, or go to the trend, and are you going to authorize overtime for other staff to take up that workload?
John, Parks Director?
I'll take the first shot at that. None of my staff, very few of my staff are eligible for overtime. They're all salaried, so no, we don't authorize overtime. Only our union staff, which is our park maintenance workers, they're part of Teamsters, they're, they would be eligible for overtime. We have a small overtime budget, and we pretty much hit it every year, supporting large special events, all the special events we do from red, white, and blues, Diversity Festival, let's see, snow and ice removal that are, that are required and needed for operations of the city. city. So to answer your question, if someone's out sick, no. We don't have overtime to cover that. It's not part of our, how our employees work. It's different in the nonrepresented world.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, council? Actually, I just told the deputy mayor we were going to go till 9:00. So, come on, someone's got some more questions, suggestions? It is important that everybody feels comfortable providing their input. And so I'll say that, you know, while I addressed several points, it is obviously very important that people have the ability and the freedom to be able to propose. But I also, you know, I think it is important to make sure, you know, I don't want to just stay silent when I, I want to make sure that, you know, the possible ramifications are out there. Council, we've got, it's 8:30 right now, any other? All right, let's talk about next steps. Councilor Tran?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think, Aday, you are missing the $25,000 I asked for the lean training and implementation.
Councilor Tran? Yes, I'm a mayor.
Yeah, yeah. Can you put that on there? It was one of the suggestions, Aday. Councilor Moore?
Yeah, I actually would like to call that quality management training. It's really the same thing. So it's really the same thing as lean management, Aday?
It's the same.
It's essentially the same.
It's the same as lean?
It's the same as line 24.
Hmm?
So line 25 and line 25, I'm sorry, line 25 and line 24 are the same thing.
This is simple.
So I'm just proposing, instead of lean management, we call it, we call it...
Quality.
Quality. Instead of lean management, we call it quality management.
Okay.
So lean quality management?
Just quality.
Quality.
Okay. All right. Council, but let's start with deputy mayor. How do you, you know, we've got Councilor Tran's suggestions, we've got some of the deputy mayor's suggestions. When is the next, let's talk about this timeline. I don't have the calendar right in front of me, right this moment. Do we have the, does anybody have the calendar in front of them? When is our next budget meeting?
The next budget meeting, I believe, is the council meeting on 6th.
Yep.
It's the first public hearing.
So, okay, so we've got the, thank you very much, Councilor Tran. So the next regularly scheduled budget meeting will be during the council meeting, at our council meeting on November 6th. That's next Tuesday. I think several people said that, so, thank you. Okay.
And then I, if I may?
Please.
You know, at that point, because we have it listed, again, at the very next council meeting, another...
Yes.
Continuation.
Yeah.
But if we need more time after next Tuesday, maybe perhaps we need to schedule another meeting before.
In between?
Yeah.
Well, I, I did, the only problem with that, the only issue...
Oh, it's you.
Is...
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say it that way. No. Is it okay?
Exactly, exactly.
Is it okay if I say?
Of course, yes, please, so...
He's having surgery on his knee.
That's right. And so...
That's what I meant.
That's right, exactly. The only issue is me. And that's what she means is, I assiduously went through the, it's my word of the day, apparently, it's like, it's a great word.
I can't believe I said that, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. So Deputy Mayor Hunt is exactly right. So I was looking through this, and I did not, not wanting to ruin the Christmas holiday for my little guy and the family. I've scheduled my complete knee replacement surgery for Labor, excuse me, Veterans Day on November 12th, thinking that, I looked at the budget, and looked at it, looked at it, and I found a, an eight-day window in which we didn't have any meetings. So, and then we go right into the Thanksgiving Day holiday. So I actually kind of made those plans, but, so that's what's going on. That's why when we talk about dates, maybe it's, you know, we could, you know, we could do it before then, in the time leading up to the 12th. But once we get to the 12th, I'll be out of commission for...
Well, I thought we had, I thought we had dates set down.
We do, we do. So we've got, after the 6th, then, actually, that whole next week would be available, right? No. Later that week, yeah.
You'll be recovering, and I won't let you come to City Hall, because you could get a blood clot or something.
That's right.
So you can't do that. But we would have the...
You could call in.
Yeah.
You know, we need to give 24-hour notice, right?
Yeah, actually, so we could have...
So if we did the 8th?
Yeah, we could have the 7th, 8th, 9th is the PAC. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, we could do the 8th.
If we need it.
Yeah. Yeah.
On the 4th. Or you could go home on the 4th.
Or he could call in from home.
Um, yeah. So...
We have a schedule here.
We are going off the schedule, yeah.
Okay, so, well, I have, I have a 12th, 3rd, so I have a 6th, I have a 20th, and a 4th.
Right, but if we need more time after next Tuesday's discussion, we're trying to set up a time before the following council meeting, because we're running out of council meetings.
Yeah, we could have more that week. Let me just take a look at the calendar, and it was something we could take a look, let's see if there's just something that immediately jumps out. Like, frankly, actually, the very next day, on the 7th, if we need it, and also the 8th...
Mayor?
Yes?
Planning Commission meets on the 7th?
Well, this is city budget, so we would have to just tell the Planning Commission they could actually meet downstairs. And, you know, in the Patrick Mar room, or somewhere, where they can meet, in the Halbus Room. So why don't we do this, everybody? We could tentatively set, I think, obviously, decisions need to be made at some point, so we're, at some point, we're going to, we're going to run out of runway here, to use an analogy. So we have the 7th and 8th available. Do I hear a consensus for possibly using the evenings of the 7th and 8th? Maybe identify both dates at this stage?
Yeah, I like the 7th the best.
Okay. 7th? And then maybe even, maybe even, if we, if there's still time, let's make sure we've got enough runway here, still identify the 8th if necessary.
Yep.
We can always cancel on the 7th.
Yeah. Let, is everybody, can everybody consult their calendars real quick? So we've got the 7th, Wednesday, the 7th, at 6:00. And then Thursday, the 8th, also at 6:00. And right now, do I hear consensus, so if necessary, that we would have a meeting on the 7th to start off with? Okay.
Oh, even my, it even beeped, so it agrees with you.
Oh, invitation from Martin Moore, okay.
What? What?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I just added it to my calendar.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Exactly.
You added it to all of our calendars.
Well, just to leave it. Jerry Lynn, maybe you can add it.
Consider it done.
I don't know why that happens.
6:00 PM. Okay, all kidding aside, everybody, I think, so we've got, you guys, you guys, you guys. So we've got, right now, we've got our next budget meeting on the 6th during the council chamber, council meeting. The next day, on the 7th, we have right now a tentative scheduled meeting. What I would suggest is, if I could, in regard to several, we've got these dollar figures up there, again, please be careful, I think it's important and incumbent upon me to say, we're going to be very careful about, we're going to make sure that there, that a quorum is not reached with regard to internal discussions with the council. That being said, the council could still talk internally, but at some point, decisions are going to be made, because we certainly, one of the things I just want to warn against is, when we get to the 20th, that's going to be the first reading, and then the first meeting of December is second reading. If we go past the 4th, then we start getting, you know, this budget must be passed by the end of the year. We want to make sure that, and frankly, from what I hear, I mean, I know that, well, this council, well, there's been a lot of discussion about this being a, these are tough decisions. There actually isn't that much on the table with regard to, I just want to just encourage the council, let's figure out how we're going to get to narrow this down, so we don't blow past the 4th of December. Because then we start getting into territory in which we start literally running out of time.
Yeah, Neil, just for the record, you have to certify to the King County the first week of December.
Right. So that is really, December 4th is really it. And so, and we were, you know, yeah, okay. So we've got those two additional dates. But I think we also need to, the last thing is, I'll just say, if we've got some, if we've got some budget figures or proposals that are going to increase expenditures, I think we need to really figure out what is the cost of that? And where's that going to come from? And as you could see from the $51,000 calculation that I did, it's tight, it's tough. And I do want to say real quickly that I, I know there's been a long history in regard to the city administrator position. I respect the position, I know, I know that's your long sought position. I just wanted to clarify that I, I think, I don't think it'd be a wise expenditure or pigeonholing of money, because I, the reason why I brought it up is, it wouldn't be used. And so $200,000 would be really well spent somewhere else.
I have a question for you.
Yeah, Councilor Hunt?
With the homeless task force, you've probably had many discussions with Sherri Edwards.
Yes.
Do they have a budget number that they're looking at? Do they have things that they want funded?
No.
They don't?
No. Not to my knowledge, as of yet. Yarden?
Yeah, I was going to say... Dot? Okay. Sorry, I haven't done this before. We actually had a planning meeting today with Sherri and Jeff Watson and Sarah and I. We're starting to, at this point, collate the recommendations of the four different task groups, and we're going to be sending them out to comment for the whole task force. So at this point, it's, we really, we don't have any numbers at this point.
May I ask, are there things that will need to be funded in the report, that you can...
It is possible that there be suggestions that, or recommendations that, that would, it's possible. I mean, I just, I can't say until the whole task force hasn't considered all the recommendations yet, but in reviewing some of the preliminary drafts, I mean, I, you know, I think, as Sherri had said in her op-ed that she wrote in the Federway Mayor a couple weeks ago, the, you know, the object really is to try to see where the community groups can partner and not really costing city money. But I, you know, I think there could be some areas that, depending on what the whole task force agrees on eventually, that could involve funding. I just can't really say at this point.
All right, thank you.
All right. Council? Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify just one thing. All the proposals that I put out there will be offset by the potential saving from the capping the police department overtime at 500,000, and keep the 160 FTEs for the police department, and eliminate .5 FTE for the PAC.